We'll call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2022-22 for October 18th, 2022. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Praise of Leagues, please do.
Father, God, we have it. Thou be thy name, thy kingdom come; thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, but give us not trespasses. Forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation; but deliver us from evil. The nigh is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion of corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. The consent agenda has been approved. At this time, we have three proclamations to read. First one is proclamation to the National Federation of the Blind for White Cane Day. Heather Guy, they have representative. Bill, would you want to read it?
Yeah.
If you don't mind, yeah, sure. I must think we start late.
This is a proclamation for White Cane Awareness Day, and I'll read this. Oh, you have someone. Just in time. Perfect.
They say Tim's coming.
Perfect.
Here we go, here we go.
Good morning.
Just keep right on coming.
Keep right on coming, right on.
Keep right on coming, yep, yep.
I can make an entrance.
Yep, that's right.
Perfect.
You're making a grand entrance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yep, yep, get right on, come right up here. Perfect Tommy's.
That's perfect Tommy. A lot of people don't drive, so.
That's all my fault. Now they get to play.
Not as early as I were to the box.
Yeah. It's on your right, just on your right.
All right, yeah, you join right, yeah, join me right here.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry, Pam. All right. Good morning. Good morning. All right, this is a proclamation for White Cane Awareness Day, and I'll read this. Whereas the white cane symbolizes the ability for blind citizens to achieve a full and independent life and the capacity to work productively in competitive employment, and whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires motorists and cyclists use caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane, and whereas Maryland law calls upon employers to utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities, and whereas the state of Maryland through public agencies and with the assistance of the National Federation of the Blind of Maryland should facilitate the expansion of employment opportunities and greater acceptance of blind persons in the competitive labor market. Now therefore, the acting county executive and the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaim October 19th, 2022 as White Cane Awareness Day in Wycomico County and call upon all citizens to recognize the white cane as a tool of independence for blind persons. And I know we got a couple of folks with us here today. In fact, if you'd like to say, make a little comment, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you. I know who you are by your voice. You are Mr. Bill McKean, right?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, county council. Thank you to Laura for making it all happen. Good morning, everyone, and my name is Timothy Mayer, and I'm a resident of Wycomico County, and I'm joined today by Pamela Dennis and Amy Kraus, and we're thank you very much for taking the time to recognize White Cane Awareness Day and the National Federation of the Blind of Maryland. We have a chapter here in Wycomico County for the whole eastern shore. We meet the second Saturday of the month. We travel around where we meet. Sometimes we meet downtown at the library, but we try to be out and about, do all kinds of things to let the public be aware of blind people, blind people being independent, blind people being employed. So Pam is with us today. Pam is an associate up at Blind Industries and Services of Maryland up in on Northwood Drive. They're one of the largest employers, not only here on the eastern shore of blind people, but in the entire state of Maryland. They have an incredible facility in Baltimore as well. They also have a second facility here in Salisbury on Old Ocean City Road. That's a cutting facility. And between the two facilities currently right here in Wycomico, they are employing about how many blind associates right now? Can you say that again, please?
About 50 associates.
Yeah, but about, about, isn't it about 60 blind people, I guess?
Yes.
It's about 60 blind people. 60 blind people that are currently and actively employed with above living wage wages. So that's quite an accomplishment for the whole area. Anybody ever interested in wanting to take a tour and see blind people at work? They sew military uniforms for the Department of Defense right here in Wycomico County. Thank you. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak and to recognize Blind Cane Awareness Month, and I think this is the second year that the Wycomico County Council has done that, so we are grateful for that recognition as well. And happy fall to everyone, happy winter, and we'll hopefully see you around. When you see a blind person with a white cane, please say hello, because we're not going to know you're there unless you say hello first. And it's okay to say hello, so thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Want me to get our picture taken?
Yeah, right here.
Right, Pam, where are you?
All right, great. Where's the photographer?
Yeah, I'm straight there.
There you go. He's got to speak it.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I should mention, by the way, Tim has done a great job with, I know he's tried to put together camps for kids that are also experiencing issues with sight impairment and blind, so he's, COVID had made that a little bit hard to do, and then, but we were able to, was able to pull that off this past summer.
Yeah.
And Tim's just a great guy, actually, he's in my district, fantastic human being, so I specifically want to point him out. It's just, thank you very much, Tim, for all you do.
Thank you. I'll pay you later on.
And Mr. Cannon, I think the council's done this more than twice.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Some more to your right.
Lost Tim.
There you go.
I'd like to stay, but.
Next, we have on the agenda a proclamation to recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Crystal, is it Heiser? Heiser? With a board member of a great organization in Wycomico County, the Women Supporting Women, Councilman Joe Holloway will be presenting the proclamation at the podium. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for being here. Proud to present this proclamation. Before I start, the work that these folks do is very important, and unfortunately, there's a lot more work to be done. We had a personal incident here a few weeks ago. My wife's cousin, 52-year-old, died of breast cancer and hit the family very hard. She was a very healthy, vibrant young lady who worked in the medical field, and within a few months, it all changed, so thank you for all you do. This is a proclamation of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease and increase public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer diagnosis and treatment, and whereas research shows that clinical breast cancer, breast examinations and screening mammograms can help reduce the number of deaths from breast cancer among women, and whereas every woman is at risk for breast cancer even if she has no family history or other risk factors for the disease, and screening and early detection of breast cancer are vital to the health and well-being of all women. Now therefore, the acting county executive and the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaim October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Wycomico County and encourage all women to learn about their risks for breast cancer, talk to their health care provider about recommended breast cancer screenings, and be screened with clinical breast examinations and mammograms. This is done on the 18th day of October, 2022. It's signed by the acting county county executive and all the county council members. So would you like to say something?
Thank you very, very much. Good morning. It is an honor and a privilege to be able to accept this proclamation on behalf of Women Supporting Women, not only as a board member, but also as a five-year survivor that did utilize Women Supporting Women services once upon a time. We are a grassroots organization. We do not get funding from the big companies and the big charity raisers, fund raisers and whatnot. We were started by three women who had a vision to serve the breast cancer community of men and women, primarily women. We still follow that vision and that mission today with providing services and resources into our local community. Eighty-two cents of every dollar that we raise as fundraising stays here in Wycomico County, Worcester County, Somerset County, and Dorchester County. So that 82 cents goes towards resources like prosthetic wigs, prosthetic bras, and lift chairs for post-surgical patients. It also provides what we call our pink bag. Every cancer patient that's diagnosed in our counties receives a free pink bag when they're diagnosed by their doctor. Each bag is roughly $60 to $80 apiece. We provide that for free. So we are always, always looking for volunteers. We are always very grateful for legacy gifts and kind gifts, in honor of gifts, time and money. It's what makes this organization what it is, so we can continue to provide for our community. Thank you all very much for this very, very, very special proclamation.
Thank you. Actually, we have a proclamation to recognize National Domestic Violence Month. Ms. Karen Hughes with the Life Crisis Center, another great organization in Wycomico County, is here to receive, to accept the proclamation. From my councilman, Don.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right, this is something that I think everyone should be aware of. I think it's important. It doesn't matter who you are. In the past, I've gotten involved, I've seen attacks happen, and it's probably not always the smartest thing to do, but with a phone these days, you could at least make a phone call, so please don't let this happen. So this is a proclamation to recognize National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of abusive behavior used to gain and maintain control over another, which can occur in the form of physical, verbal, or emotional abuse, domestic violence affects millions across the U.S. regardless of cultural background, ethnicity, sexual orientation, faith, socioeconomic status, or educational background. And whereas domestic violence is never the fault of the victims and survivors, and the vast majority of cases go unreported, which leaves victims suffering silently in places where others consider the safest, their home, work, or school. And whereas we all have the ability to empower victims and survivors by offering resources, listening without judgment, and reminding them that they are not alone. Education and awareness are also critical components in the effort to end domestic violence. Now therefore, the acting county executive and the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaim October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Wycomico County and encourage all citizens to join in the movement to end domestic violence by educating themselves, speaking up, and by offering support to victims and survivors. Done this 18th day of October, 2022, and signed by the acting county executive and all seven of the Wycomico County council members.
Domestic violence is not something people talk about, and we often recognize other abuses. We look at child abuse, we look at sexual assault or rape, but domestic violence is not something people want to even acknowledge that it's here, but it is. One in three women and one in four men will be a victim at some point in their lives. That's a lot. So the life crisis has been around for a very long time, and we offer our hotline. We have legal services where we go into the courts and help with protective orders. We have a safe house, and we also do therapeutic services. And what we hope to do is to help the victim become a survivor. And I thank you for recognizing that, that we can do this, and we can provide, and our community can help and recognize that this is an issue that we have to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would want to recognize, if I could, Representative from Senator Marybeth Carrose's office, Pat Schroeder. Pat, good to have you here. Delegate Carl Anerton, sitting way in the back today.
That's right.
City Councilman Michelle Gregory, glad to have you here. Executive Director of the Tri-County Council, Mr. Greg Padgeham is here, and Past President of the NAACP, Mary Shawna, good to have you here. You're always here. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion from the council to adjourn from legislative session and to convene as the local board of health.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Good morning. We have here a report on the health of the county. Ms. Lori Brewster, our health officer.
Good morning.
Good morning. You certainly have the floor.
So for the past couple of years, COVID has been on our agenda, and it remains on the agenda today. We are headed in the right direction, as of today, I will say. As of the 14th of October, Wycomico County has had 23,207 confirmed cases of COVID. We know that that number has probably been greater because there are individuals that have tested positive by home test and not reported. Our weekly case counts remained well below 100 through March and April, but they did begin to rise a little bit in May, and they began to decline in late August, which I was very grateful for since school started in September. We have hovered around a case rate of 10 per 100,000 for the past few weeks, and we are just a little bit below 10 today. And the CDC does classification of transmission levels in the community, as well as a community level, and we are at a substantial transmission level in Wycomico County, which is consistent with what's happening across the state. As far as our positivity rate, we have finally broke 10, and we are today at 7.84% positivity rate. The state is at 7.35%, so we are close to what the state rate is. And we do have and will have at-home test kits for anyone that is wanting those. The federal government has stopped providing those, but we still have some in stock and will provide them as needed. As of the 14th of October, there were a total of nine individuals at Title Health hospitalized with COVID, and five were Wycomico County residents. And what we're seeing most is the Omicron BA5 floating around, and the vaccine that has been provided, most recently the bivalent vaccine, is targeting the BA5, Omicron BA5. Since the start of the pandemic, we have lost 345 Wycomico residents to COVID, which is a significant number. I often say one is too many, but we have seen less deaths over the past year than we did early on in COVID. We have four facilities, nursing homes, and assisted living with outbreaks. And one of them at least has been in an outbreak for quite a while, I will say that. Just as they think that they are getting cleared, they have another person test positive. So the health department continues to do vaccinations every Tuesday morning, drive-through right out back of the health department on Carroll Street, easy access in, easy access out, and we are still vaccinating every Monday and Wednesday. And we have seen our vaccination numbers increase over the past few weeks. I think people are wanting to get the boosters in before flu season hits. So on to other things. There is still flu in our communities. As you probably know, there were no outbreaks of influenza in 2020, 2021, when people were wearing masks. We are concerned that this 2022 season is going to be a difficult one as we monitored what was happening in the southern hemisphere. The areas in the southern hemisphere had a very bad flu season, and that's pretty indicative of what our flu season is going to be like. Australia had the worst season that they've ever had in the past five years, peaking at three times higher than the average for that five-year period. With that being said, I encourage everyone to get their flu vaccine. Now is the time to get it. The other concern is that the flu vaccine, or the flu season in the southern hemisphere peaked two months earlier than usual, so if we look at that for us, getting the vaccine now is the best option because flu season peaks January, February. And then, of course, we have monkeypox. As if we didn't have enough going on in the world of public health, monkeypox began. There have been 682 cases statewide, less than 10 in Wycomico County. One-third of the total cases in Maryland have occurred in Prince George's County, followed by another third in Baltimore City. We have had vaccine. We have been vaccinating those that are at high risk for contracting monkeypox. And I will say that 6,921 people have been vaccinated in Maryland to date, and we have seen a decline in the numbers in Maryland as well as across the country. So we're hoping we're on the down slope.
How do you know if you're at high risk?
It's individuals that, particularly those that have HIV/AIDS that we're targeting for vaccinations, and those that are in high-risk activities such as sex trades or frequenting sex trade facilities that we are targeting. So we have been providing vaccine to those individuals.
Has it been deemed a sexually transmittable disease?
It is a skin-to-skin contact, so it's not necessarily a sexually transmitted disease, but skin-to-skin contact is the way that it's being transmitted.
You say you're targeting. Are you actively targeting, or that's who you're offering it to if they want it?
So the state developed a registry for those that are interested in getting the vaccine, and it is done by county. So if individuals in Wycomico County want the vaccine, then they sign up on the state registry, and we get that information, and we provide the vaccination information to them and bring them in.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess I just want to let you all know that this year's school year, we struggled getting childhood vaccinations done in a timely fashion. We opened up vaccination clinics all during the summer, many of them not well attended. We, the first week of school, we found out that there were over 250 children that were in need of their vaccinations in order to stay in school because there is an exclusion criteria for the childhood vaccinations. So we put a halt on all of our other services so that we didn't have children excluded in Wycomico County. We, according to my staff and the school system, saw an increase in individuals coming into the county from outside of the country, and that's what resulted in the high number of those individuals. We were able to vaccinate all but about 25 of those cases. We vaccinated well over 300 children so that they did not get excluded from school. So my, I will say, my staff did a great job in making sure that the children in Wycomico County could be maintained in the school system, all but about 25, so. And I will open that up for questions. You know, we did talk the last time about our community health needs assessment, and that has been completed with, in collaboration with Title Health and with Somerset County Health Department, and we are working on our community health improvement plan at this point, focusing on the areas identified in the needs assessment.
Joe? It's not really a question, but when you mentioned that 23,000 number, and then you said there were probably a lot of unreported, that's about a quarter of our population in the county. That's pretty significant.
Correct. So over, over two years, though. It's been two and a half years.
Yeah. Environmental health.
Yes.
I know we've got, you know, that's an ongoing saga. Is any, anything going on with that as far as increasing staffing? Were we getting anything, any inroads made there?
Actually, we've had a decrease in staff. We had a mass exodus of all of our front office help, so every one of our clerical staff resigned all at the same time. They went on to other state jobs that paid more, and during their exit conference, they said that they felt as though they were being beat up by the public, and I have no doubt that that was probably occurring because people want things and they want them done quickly. And, you know, we are at a point where we have one environmental specialist and a trainee to do all of the well and septic program in the county, and as you can imagine, we have a backlog. We currently have 41 septic permits outstanding and 81 land evaluations outstanding. Now, the, the land evaluations are dependent upon wet season testing, and we didn't have a wet season for this past year, so many of them are carried over into the next wet season, which generally occurs sometime around February, March.
So are we getting any help from the state on this? I mean, this is, you know, this is where it all, I know you're, it's a Wycomico, and I want to emphasize this, this is a Wycomico County Health Department, but it's also, it is a state agency. So where's our state on this as far as stepping in and trying to help with this?
So our well and septic program is a delegation from the Maryland Department of the Environment. This is something that I have been working with the Maryland Department of the Environment on, advising that we are in a situation where we don't have enough staff to do the work in the county, and And I think you will hear today that we have been working with Maryland Department of the Environment on a potential contract with a vendor to provide some staffing in this county to help us bridge that gap that we can't bridge. We have recruitment issues, which is not unusual across the state. My colleagues are having recruitment issues. Many of them are on the verge of being identified as critical, just as we are. One jurisdiction, I was talking with their health officer last week, and they have no one in their division doing wells and septics as of last week. So it's, it's not a unique problem to Wycomico County. It just, we are working with MDE to get this contract for staffing moving.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the report. We appreciate that. And thank you also for, for the time you spent with Wycomico County and the service that you've given to Wycomico County and the state of Maryland, really. You know, outside of the basic health-related services, we found ourselves, I think, really overcome with an opioid crisis that came along first. And the way that you and your department took action, I think, was outstanding. And we have Wycomico Goes Purple. I have to apologize for not going to all your events because you had too many. You had, you had probably five different events just in, in the one month alone, and they were all really great events, well-attended, and I think it was, it was a great, a great testament to the work that you've done and the progress that we are making in Wycomico County. You know, the COE program that you helped to establish was accepted by the state of Maryland, recognized by the state of Maryland as a very effective means by which to address the opioid crisis and the state stations that we've also established throughout the county. And then as if the opioid crisis wasn't enough, all of a sudden we were hit with COVID. And I think your performance in COVID even managed to outshine what you did with the opioid crisis. I mean, you took care, you handled all the business in Wycomico County. You were doing such a good job, they asked you to go down to Somerset County as well. And the next thing you know, besides your regular routine, besides your regular health services, besides opioid, now you had COVID to deal with in two counties. So you were, you did phenomenal. We appreciate that and your hard work and your dedication. So you're leaving quite a legacy in Wycomico County. We do appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
Certainly. Any other comments?
I guess this will be the last time you'll be before us, so, you know, but thank you very much. I'll echo all of John's sentiments. It's a tough job.
Certainly is.
Yep, but you stood up to it and, you know, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, I mean, I don't think I could have said it better than John did. I wanted to let him speak first, but yeah, I mean, wow. All that you've gone through in the last couple of years, I mean, since I've been on the council, my goodness. So I appreciate all that you've done there, and I hope you, as you wrap things up, you know, it'd be nice to see a new era come forward with the county where we can really start to address a lot of our issues across the board. But you've done, you really deserve a lot of thanks and attention for all that you've done, so thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm not leaving the workforce, but I'm leaving my position at the Health Department.
I do want to thank you for what you've done for the county. You've been very effective, and you've always been responsive to this body for at least the last eight years that I'm aware of. Thank you, and sorry that you're not retiring. I thought you were gonna enjoy your life now, but good luck.
Well, I will.
Okay. You won't get beat up anymore. So thank you for everything you've done for Wycomico and the state.
Well, thank you.
Very good. Entertained a motion to adjourn from the local Board of Health and reconvene into legislative session of Wycomico County Council.
Stayed.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor, opposed? Thank you very much. Mrs. Hurley, it's still morning.
It is morning. Good morning, Council President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The next item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on surplus property. You'll notice that there are two public hearings on the agenda for surplus property. They both pertain to the same parcel of land, but they are two separate projects. Each of the public hearings on the agenda this morning have been posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper. The first public hearing is declaring a one-acre portion of the property located at the Hebron Convenience Center on Old Railroad Road located in Hebron, Maryland as surplus for purchase by Porter Mill LLC. And we do have Mr. Mark Whitlock here, Deputy Director of Public Works, to answer any questions. And council did have a work session on this request in per Charter Section 22, I'm sorry, code, county code, Section 221. Today is just the public hearing. This project will come back before council at the next legislative session by resolution for your consideration.
Ms. Hurley, at this time, we open the floor for public hearing on surplus property for one-acre portion of property at the Hebron Convenience Center on Old Ocean, Old Railroad Road in Hebron. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this specific issue, come to the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on this surplus property. Ms. Hurley?
Next is a public hearing declaring a one-acre portion of the property located at the Hebron Convenience Center on Old Railroad Road in Hebron, Maryland as surplus for donation to the Commissioners of Hebron for a water tower together with a fee simple right-of-way access.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on the surplus property for one-acre portion on Old Railroad Road in Hebron for a water tower. If you'd have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. Okay, well, thank you. That concludes the public hearing on this surplus property.
Okay, next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 137-2022. This is to amend the Wycomico County Water and Sewer Master Plan to include property located 908 Lock Raven Road in Salisbury, Maryland. Council did have a work session on this request on September the 20th, and Mr. Mark Whitlock, Deputy Director of Public Works, is here.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 137-2022. Have any comments you'd like to make? Come to the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. Okay. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 137-2022. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 137-2022.
Stayed.
Second.
Second.
Any questions for Mr. Whitlock? Seeing all those in favor of Resolution 137-2, yes.
Just very briefly, that I wanted to point out, of course, this, this property, this space is near, you know, near Shoemaker Pond. There's been a lot of folks reaching out lately about their septic systems and their sewer systems, or, you know, how do they connect into a space like that? The Shoemaker Pond area has been, had a lot of algae growth. It used to be a place not that long ago. I think many folks in the room probably remember, you could go swimming there. Obviously, you don't even want to touch the water now. But a big reason why we can't do that, obviously, is because these, these, a lot of these homes that are around there are not hooked up to a public sewer system. So only wanted to use this as an opportunity to continue to point to the work that we are going to be doing, which is hooking up as many septic systems as possible to a public sewer where we can get better water quality benefits. Thank you.
Other comments? Seeing on, all those in favor of Resolution 137-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
And the next item for business is a public hearing on Resolution Number 138-2022. This is to amend the fiscal year 2023 operating and capital budget and fiscal year 2023 capital improvement plan to approve funding for the purchase of two emergency generators and upgrades to the current SCADA system for the solid waste department in the amount of $509,195.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 138-2022. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 138-2022. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 138-2022.
Stayed.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 138-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next, for your consideration is Resolution Number 139-2022. This is to amend the fiscal year 2023 budget to allocate funding distribution to task force members, the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, and the state's attorney's office in the amount of $536,649. And we have Pam Olin here, Director of Finance, if there are any questions.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 139-2022. Stayed. Second.
Second.
We have a motion second.
Good morning.
Good morning. So the Sheriff's Office Task Force has been shut down, and there are funds available in that fund that need to be distributed to the partners. We had anticipated that some of that funding would actually happen last year. It did not. So we need to budget for that distribution. Council has the documentation as to how the number was derived. And I know there were two questions asked about what does equity and pooled cash mean? We keep one overall bank account primarily for the county, and each of the funds then have a share in that. And so that's what that means. That's their share of cash. And then the other piece was, there was some equipment that was held by, or that the task force had. That equipment was given a value and distributed to the members, and then each member is being brought up to the same total dollar amount, and that's why you'll see different amounts being distributed to different partners because some of them kept higher-dollar value equipment.
Okay. How many partners were there?
Let me look at the list. Give me a second. Five.
Pardon?
Five.
Five. Now, does this, when this money goes into the state's attorney's office and the sheriff's department, does that mean that's going to affect their next budget as far as deduction in their budget?
We did this in a two-step process. We're gonna be coming back to council, asking for a budget amendment for those two departments to utilize those funds. I just don't have, I don't have that documentation yet to be able to create that budget amendment. I believe, if I remember correctly, on the sheriff's department, we're asking for it to be put towards the furniture and fixtures that we need at the new sheriff's. So that's where that is. I just don't yet have the documentation from state's attorney as to how they would like to utilize their funds.
If I understand correctly, also, and I'm not sure exactly whether this is 100% correct, but is this the type of funding that can, that the council or the county government is not allowed to supplement their regular operating budget with this funding? This funding has to be accepted and spent for different, different means.
So I'm getting a nod from Todd Richards, Major Richardson, and yes. So it has to be utilized for probably, primarily capital-type purchases. So, so it will be, we will be back either next meeting or the following meeting with a budget amendment to council for how the departments want to spend those funds.
Other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 139-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Major.
Mr. President, that's all I have for now, but I would like to bring to your attention, we do have a resolution on the agenda for later this afternoon regarding the bond award.
Thank you. Thank you, Major. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. Anybody who would like to make any public comments, come to the podium, please. Behind, Ms. Shanti.
My name is Mary Ashanti, and I'm a paying member of Wycomico County. For reference to taxes, I, excuse me, because I didn't see that this was not a public hearing on this part, and the person that could answer my question is gone. But I guess I'm gonna, I'm going to ask this anyway because those that are listening in reference to the $536,649 to be allocated after the budget is done, I don't understand, and probably other citizens out there won't understand why this was not taken care of earlier. This building has been, been approved to be built for some time, and now we're talking about furniture for it and whatever. And, and we don't know why the, 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 Ms. Stikes want, want money and whatever. So I, I think that when we bring these things up, there should be more of an explanation to the community as to why their tax dollars are going to these things and why wasn't it taken care of earlier and why wasn't it thought about earlier. As taxpayers, we need to understand where our money is going and why it's going in those So I, you know, I don't understand why my tax dollars is going into this. So that's why I stood up, but the other reason, I'm thankful, and I'm sure people that, that own homes that are old like mine are thankful that we are trying to do something about it. I think the community needs to know that the Wycomico County Health Department is not, not at blame for the predicament that we're in. Let's put it, put the blame where it deserved, at the governor's office and the people that he has, has hard or not hard to do their work. So, but the situation needs to be corrected. We need to hold these people in the Eastern Shore delegation accountable also. They knew that, that we were having problems, that we hadn't had water and sewer and county wide during my lifetime. And so this needs to be corrected. If it means to march on the governor's office or anywhere else, this needs to be corrected. And I'm not talking about waiting till a new governor come in and whatever. These people are getting paid. They're getting paid for October, November, and December. And so we, we want something done. We want to see a paper trail. We want to see that you've sent letters to whoever you need to send letters to and whatever. Send a letter to, whatever you have to do, we want water and sewer countywide.
Thank you, Ms. Shanti. You know, as a point of clarification, Ms. Shanti, we probably should have made it a little more clear in the, when we were doing the resolution in regard to the task force. The reason you're seeing it come forward now is because the task force just recently disbanded. Because of that disbanding, it was required that the distributions be made at this point in time, okay?
Does it mean they're not coming back?
They'll be back, they'll be back at some point in the future, yes, to explain exactly.
Unfortunately.
Yes.
I was speaking for the community. That's unfortunate.
There are still, there are still, there are still tasks, as, there are still measures still in place to address narcotics, the problem of narcotics in the county. It's just the way that it was configured at the time, it was disbanded, and I think, you know, there's a regrouping of that organization.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
And, that's what people, I was not arguing with you. When I asked you, but I was not arguing with you.
Recognize that, Mrs. Shanti. We appreciate your input.
I'll lead off. I'm sure I've got a few other people that want to speak. Hopefully, we'll, my name's Colin Zimmer. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Coastal Association Realtors. I'm also a Wacomiko County resident, District Four, I believe. Let me paint a little picture, because I'm not sure people are as concerned as they need to be. Lori got up and said, we have one person, we have one person doing inspections in the county. We can't hire more people because MDH pay scale, I think it's, the pay is about $32,000 a year, and to get somebody down here to do that, they won't. So, we can't hire more people unless MDH change the pay scale. So, we need help at the state level to, to lobby MDH to change that. And we are working with the delegation, and we need your help to pressure the delegation to do that. We've got members of the delegation here, we've got members of Senator Caroza's office here, so that needs to change, and that can only happen, unfortunately, when they're doing business. But we need help before then. There are a lot of inspections that need to happen. Anytime property changes hands in the county, it needs to be inspected. So, we have deals that aren't happening. We have people who can't move. We have people can't get a home. We have people who can't find a home in the county because inspections aren't happening. We've had a contract sitting in the county executive office for two months now, since August, that hasn't moved. And the contract would say, we're gonna provide, I think, three engineers and three front staff to the county to, to do these backlog, and it hasn't happened. And there should be outrage from you all. There should be outrage that this is not happening, and it can't wait for the next county executive, and it can't wait for the next health officer. It needs to happen today. It needs to happen in August, but it can't happen in August at this point, so it has to happen today. We have a standstill in real estate in the county, an absolute standstill. We have people who aren't able to buy homes and are saying, well, I'm gonna go to a different county, I'm gonna go to a different state, I'm gonna go to Delaware. We have people who are homeless because they can't find a place to live. We have people who can't sell their homes because their, their property no longer perks because the water table is not where it was in 1981 when it was built. We have properties in the middle of the city which are carved-out county properties which are too small to put a new drain field in. And because the drain field can't go there, their only option is to put holding tanks in, and the holding tanks cost anywhere from $200 to $400 a pump, and you have to do it twice a month. So, in order to do, go to the bathroom on your property, you have to pay $800 a month.
You need to correct that, $200 to $400. You said $200 to $400.
No, $200 to $400, yes. Yeah, absolutely. $200 to $400 a pumping, twice a month. And who's gonna buy that property? Who is gonna buy a property where you can't go to the bathroom at it? So, there needs to be a very vigorous discussion with the other municipalities of, who have sewer and septic, or sewer and water that are adjacent, that can provide. And I know those discussions are happening. I know there are members here from committees like Greater Salisbury Committee that are, are leading these conversations, and I know you guys have a plan in place that GMB did that is, is thick and great, but it needs to happen. And, and the amount of concern that needs to be shown needs to be so high. If you could do nothing else, if you do nothing else as a council for the next four years, and you establish a water sewer, you will have done a great job. It, it could be 100% water sewer, and everyone will go, that is the best council we've ever had. So, I have members here of the real estate community who have had firsthand experience. I'm not a Realtor, so I haven't been part of these, but I know, you know, Rob and Frances and other people here have dealt with it. We've got members of the Greater Salisbury Committee who have, dealing with this, so I'd love for some of them to get up and talk and, and give their feelings. We've got somebody who's dealing with water and sewer in their yard right now. So, please hear what they have to say. Please understand how important this is. There's no greater emergency we have, there's no greater health emergency we have. It's not just real estate, it's not just deals being done, it's, it's health, it's, it's water table rising, it's, it's people not being able to find homes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmer.
Good morning, counsel. Thank you for your time. My name is Rob Payne. I'm a resident of Byvalve, Maryland, also one of the, a Realtor with Caldwell Banker in Salisbury, and a member of the Government Affairs Committee for Coastal Association of Realtors. And I think Colin elaborated on it quite well and, and showed the passion and urgency that, that I also want to convey. My, I come here today probably more so, I've, I've always been a proactive person as far as trying to find remedies and, and whatnot to situations, but I'm getting to a point of frustration. I've sat in meetings with numerous ones of you, private meetings, group meetings at Salisbury Greater Council, and to come up with ideas and plans, and with Ms. Dorsey was, has, has been, and I think we're gonna hear from her today about the magnitude of this problem. I personally have endured a situation that took me over 18 months to get from the point of application to the point of actually having a septic installed, and I feel like if it wasn't for the efforts of Delegate Anderton, I still may not have gotten those remedies. So, I do appreciate that, Carl, in that regard. But outside of that, I know that there's an opportunity on the table right now. I've been, tried to be filled in on some of the logistics, and I know there's a couple sticking points, but, guys, I'm just here to say, and not just to you, but this also applies to the county executive, current and future, enough kicking the can down the road, guys. Enough, enough, let's, enough deferring, let's, I don't, we don't need the 40 reasons why we can't do this anymore, and if there's a little something in the verbiage, let's, let's buckle down and have that level of urgency to work through these things so that we can remedy these problems. We, as Realtors, and I think Ms. Sterling will also convey this, we encourage our county residents who aren't on public services to get pre-inspections done, to try to stay ahead of this, to get, to be proactive in the process so that we're, to keep them out from behind the eight ball. But when we're talking about four, five-month lead times from the point of application to the point of a, to a, of a, of a plan being submitted to them, and now that there, there's been another addition that the county doesn't, you know, give the actual plan, they give the, that has to go back to the installer to, and we've added another week or two to that process, has been my recent experience with that, the, we're not getting any better, guys. And so, I just encourage each of you, deep down, and, and obviously, this goes beyond you to the county executive as well, that we, that we, we just come up with a, come up with a solution. And the, the short-term deal that we have, the opportunity that we have here, can help us bridge the gap so that we can do something on a much more permanent basis that'll serve our county well, because even though there is with the, what Miles, George Miles and Bureau have put together, I mean, we're talking five, 10, 15, 20 years out, some of those plans and programs. I, I mean, we're in 2022, we're in the height of a, even though things are shifting, the real estate market is still very active and, and very healthy, and we don't, and we need to do what we can to open this bottleneck. Appreciate your guys' time and consideration, and look forward to your responses in a positive vein. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Frances Sterling. I'm a Realtor with ERA Martin Associates. I'd just like to piggyback on what the gentleman before me have said and add a little story to it. I had a recent transaction where I had a buyer who was getting ready to purchase a property here in Wacomiko County, and it was contingent on a property being sold in Calvert County. And that property was under contract, the septic failed, and I thought, oh my gosh, you know, nothing's gonna be happening here for, forever. You know, this, it's gonna kill both of these sales, the people who are trying to move to Wacomiko County won't be able to move. But lo and behold, Calvert County had a failed septic system on September 5th. They had it, an approved permit by September 16th, and went to settlement on September 28th. Now, why can that happen in Calvert County, and it can't happen in Wacomiko County? It takes us a year, months and months to even get the paperwork reviewed. It's really hurting our county. It's hurting people wanting to come to our county. It's hurting people's values on their properties in our county. It's, it's a big, big problem. If the problem is that the regulations for the Eastern Shore just need to be reevaluated and changed from the rest of the state, we don't have the same soils as the rest of the state, we don't have the same water levels as the rest of the state. Perhaps we need to be looking at this in a greater format to change what those regulations are for, for the Eastern Shore, because we're not the same. We also have many very accomplished and knowledgeable installers and other laypeople who are not in the, you know, in the, working for the state, who are just twiddling their thumbs, waiting to be able to proceed and get these things in the ground. Why can't we use them to a better, to the better extent of their abilities to, to work for us? You know, we have a problem here. We've got lots of people who have the ability to minimize this problem. We've got to access those people and get them to work. We have way too many problems going on that I think we're all aware of, but we've got to take some action that, rather than just paper action, real action in, in solving these problems. Thank you for your time.
Sterling.
My name is Brooke Adler. Oh, I don't like talking in front of people, but here I am. I'm gonna piggyback all of you, actually, for the sewage issues in Wacomiko County. We've been in our house for five years. Our sewage was replaced when we moved in, failing drain field. We have sitting sewage in my backyard for almost three years. It sits there every day. I have two young kids that can't play in their backyard. I have two hard-of-hearing kids that can't play in our backyard. They were hearing aids. My kids have to play in the front yard because they can't play in the backyard, because there is sewage every day in my backyard. I've had Ms. Brewster, I've had Mr. Pissoda in my backyard from the day I made my first phone call, almost three years. Still to today, sewage in my backyard. So, I want someone to explain to my kids why they can't play out back. I'm just trying to figure it out. So, I can only begin to understand the frustration from real estate. We can't sell our house, we can't refinance our house, it won't pass. So, everybody here gets to go home to backyards that are clean, and I don't. Still sewage sitting in my backyard. So, I'm, I'm with you guys, it's just frustrating, and I can't, the help I've had from Mr. Anderton, I appreciate more than you'll ever know. But I shouldn't have to go to that point, it should be here. I, I can't figure it out. So, I hope you guys can help somehow, some way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. County Members of Counsel, my name's Alan Gerard. I'm the Eastern Shore Director with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation in Easton. Obviously, a lot of community concern here with this issue, public health, water quality, economic concerns. It seems like you've got unanimous support in the room to address the problem. The question is how and with what resources. The Chesapeake Bay Foundation is here, working with a number of partners in the room, and council members, and staff, and others to help supply resources and support where we can to help break through to a reasonable solution. There are a couple of questions that come to mind as we deliver that support. One is, what is the number and size, type, location of systems that need to be fixed? I think we need that critical, key, objective information in order to begin functional conversations about solutions. There have been estimates that have been made, you know, I think in order to deal with these folks' concerns, we need that baseline information to begin. So, I challenge the council to please provide that. My friend Suzanne Dorsey's here from the Maryland Department of Environment, and we have questions, the Bay Foundation does, about MDE's authority in this situation, joining the county in approving systems that will help correct septic system failures without inducing new growth. Mr. Hastings talks earlier about Shoemaker Pond, so if we run a line out to Shoemaker Pond, make the water clean and swimmable again, what is the protection for Wacomiko and the water quality impacts that would come forward if new homes are, and new development is connected to that existing line? So, I do ask the Maryland Department of Environment and Wacomiko County to let us know one, under what conditions new growth would be served by this infrastructure that we plan to correct failing septic systems. I think that is a key piece of the conversation that we need to address going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gerard.
My name is Edward Lee. I'm a real estate agent with ERA Associates. I wanted to support all that I've heard here this morning and go just a step further to share an experience with you that I had at a recent conference, Merlin Association of Realtors. This is no deprecation against anyone sitting here, but I was embarrassed. I was embarrassed because they had a work session on this very topic, and what that work session basically was saying to me, it, it put us down, because all of the reasons that you're hearing here regarding people not wanting to come to Wacomiko County, that was laid on display for the entire state conference to hear. It didn't, it was not a good feeling, embarrassed, what have you. Guys, I know that you're working on this. I know you're doing the very best that you can. I know that I've heard you on the campaign trail, speaking about this issue. John, I know where you are, I have not had that interaction with, with each of you. But, but we have a responsibility to come to grips with this daunting task before us. I don't have the solution, but I know that the people in this room and this council has the wherewithal to make it happen, and I'm certain that that's going to happen. But I, I felt compelled and obligated to say that when I was at that conference, when I was at that conference, I did not feel good, because of the information what was being disseminated regarding this county and this council, and we as Realtors were involved in it. So, I, I just want to be, I lend my voice to what has been said. Those, I'm sure, that are going to speak, I will listen to them in favor of resolving the issue of septic and sewer in Wacomiko County. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
My name is Matt Drew. I live in Wacomiko County in Salisbury. I work for a company called Orsted, but I'm also a member of the Greater Salisbury Committee, and I have the honor of chairing a task force of many people who are here in this room today who are charged with, with helping bring water and sewer to Wacomiko County. First off, I want to applaud this council. Last November, you adopted the Water and Sewer Master Plan. That plan looks at all of the residents of Wacomiko County. Currently, half of those residents are served today by water and sewer. The other... The other half of those residents, if this plan is fully implemented, and it will likely take decade or decades to implement that plan, half of that half would be addressed by water and sewer service. So, so that leaves the remaining quarter, even if we fully adopt this plan that will likely take us decades as a community to bring about, will still have private well and septic systems on their property. We, we heard a, a call for help today. We have to heed that call because even, even when we address this current need and even if we fully implement this water and sewer master plan that will take us decades to do, there's still going to be a number of residents and a number of property owners that will have to continue to have private water and sewer. So we need to have a functioning system because simply saying that once we adopt the water and sewer master plan, it's going to go away. I'm, I'm here to say that it's not going to go away. So it needs leadership. One of the benefits that, that each of you have as a leader is that you have resources at your command. This is going to require time. It's going to require talent and most of all, it's going to require treasure. And prioritizing those three things to apply them to implementing not only the water and sewer master plan, but implementing this current crisis that we have with staffing and the ability to act on behalf of, of not only the citizens of Wycomico County, but the citizens of Maryland, it's, it's, it's in your hands to, to do something about this. So I thank you for the time. I'll also say, you know, we as our Greater Salisbury Committee stand at the ready. We have a, a very, very open and, and capable group of subject matter experts and professionals that, that are here to help partner and, and solve this issue. So we stand at the ready to help you any way we can. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Drew. Any other public comments?
I was hoping to hear from Suzanne Dorsey, but she didn't stand up, so.
We're having a work session with Suzanne.
Okay, very good. I am with Senator Carosa's office. She had another commitment this morning, but we're well aware of this issue and not surprisingly, because we cover three counties, we get a lot of calls into the office having to do with water and septic, more so septic than water. And I will say that we get more from Wycomico County than the other two counties. And I was very excited when we were here last November and the water and sewer plan was introduced, we did not realize at that time how long it was going to take. But once we realized that, we began to also realize what the problem was that constituents were having and why they were so frustrated when they called us. It was people looking for housing, unable to find housing suitable, affordable, but just plain a house somewhere. But it was more often people calling saying, I don't understand. I have a sale for my house. And then they came out of the inspected and it's, they say my septic is failing, so we can't sell the house. And I don't understand because my toilet's flush and my shower drains and I drink the water that comes out of the faucet and I, it doesn't look to me like it's failing, but I'm told it isn't regardless. I can't sell the house. And I, in some cases, they want to sell the house and in other cases, they need to sell the house. So I think there are a lot of well-intended people working on it. I think most everybody recognizes there is a problem. A lot of people are working on solving the problem, but for the constituent, it appears that nothing really is happening. And I do realize that there is a problem with lack of employees in the Health Department. I mean, from the state perspective, we work very well with Department of Environment and I really appreciate the work that Suzanne Dorsey does. Everybody's doing the best job they can, but if you don't have enough people, we, our office can't call up the Health Department and say, oh, we got a call from Mr. Jones and you need to get somebody over there to inspect that property because he's been waiting for four months and we can't get anybody there. That's not our jurisdiction. It's not our authority to tell you how to run your department. But we sure hear it from constituents. And so I just plead with everyone who's here today, whatever you can do, please do it because it's having a severe impact on the community. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mike Dunn with the Greater Salisbury Committee. I want to salute you all for the extraordinary work you did a few weeks ago on the DAFT problem. That was a huge challenge that took several years to fix and you ultimately fixed it. And you worked in a, I watched every boring minute of that two-hour meeting when you went through every line by line, but I salute you. I wanted to add to the, what, what our Chair of our committee, Matt Drew, said. One of the things that is really encouraging is that in our work of this task force, and everybody in here is familiar with it, for the first time ever, we have had representatives, we've had two meetings and they will continue with members of each of the municipalities. So that's Hebron and Mardella and Sharp Town. It's Salisbury, it's Fruitland, it's Delmar, it's Pittsville and Willards have come around the table to share the challenges that they're having with their wastewater treatment plants. And I know you're familiar with what those challenges are. I was not here earlier, so I apologize if this has been addressed. I heard Colin mention some aspect of it. We have an opportunity, you have an opportunity, the Wycomico County Government has an immediate opportunity to bring some relief and that's via the, you know, Maryland Environmental Services and the contractual relationship that they want to enter into to assist Wycomico County Health Department. And obviously urging that, I think the, the funding could come from Wycomico County. I think we have it in some pocket of, of funding to be able to make that happen. And the other thing that I want to applaud is Suzanne, this is, gosh, this is probably the fifth time in the last two months that I've seen her, that I've seen her, and I know you all have too. Point being, they are very committed and we applaud what the state of Maryland is doing. They're obviously aware of the problem. You all are aware of the problem. And the immediate need is to get that agreement that sits allegedly on the desk of the acting county administrator, have that signed, have that funding come through so that the Realtors and the homeowners can get some immediate relief on solving that septic issue, the failing septic issue. And then this larger group of people represented by the Greater Salisbury Committee Task Force, Matt has met individually with the three candidates running for county executive. We have members of the county council on that task force. So while this has been a problem that has been going on for a long time, I think everyone finally recognizes that it's, it's time for Wycomico County to get in the game and establish a sanitary commission, a wastewater authority, something like that. And it certainly appears by all indication that that's the direction that we're headed. And so we look forward to, as Matt Drew said, being that collaborative partner with the Wycomico County Government, with the next county executive and with the next county council, whomever sits in your chairs. And I think there is hope on the horizon and today, there's immediate hope through the MES agreement and, and contract if we can figure out a way to get that signed and moving forward. Thanks for all you're doing. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any other public comments? Okay, that concludes public comments. Council comments? Councilman Hastings?
I'll just say, of course, I, I want everyone in the room to know, especially, you know, this particular issue is nothing new with, you know, maybe, it may have been exacerbated, especially a lot during, you know, for, for multiple reasons. We got more people moving into the area. We've got, we had COVID, people went to sell their homes, big real estate changes. You know, a lot of the homes that were built here were built 30 years ago and they're coming to the end of their life for a lot of septic systems. I want everyone who's here to know that we hear you. We, I know that this council, we said it from the day one, we wanted to come out with the new water sewer master plan. We wanted to be really to tackle the issue. We've got that. Now the next step is actually implementing, which is going to be the tough one. It's going to cost a lot of money and it's going to require a lot of work across the board. But I do want everyone to know that we're, we are, I don't want to speak for the whole council, but I'll say we are, we are definitely on it. And I think, you know, as a person who's going to be on this next council, regardless, I'm on it too. You, you've got that, you've got that support. I will also say, you know, we, we've talked in the past about, you know, issues of how do we, I think we had talked once about trying to put an extra $10,000, you know, to, to more to try to address the, the issues of not having enough money for the employees. You know, we really, really need, if this were just a Wycomico issue, you know, we could fix it pretty quickly, but it's not, obviously, and, and that's a challenge. We want to make sure that we can get that, you know, that we can get, attract the right people to come in and work here in the county. I know, I was glad to hear, I know Councilman Davis is running for county executive, other folks running for county executive. That said, it's been a top priority for them to address this. So I just want to be able to say, obviously, the folks who have brought up a lot of the concerns, we certainly hear you. This council is on board with trying to figure out how to make it happen and then the next council will make sure that they are too and they've expressed that. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Drew?
Yeah, a couple of quick comments along this same line. The, some of us, in fact, Joe, John and I, we were all first elected to this council back in 2006. And I don't want to belabor the point about the problem because we all, we know, we know the problem, but I can tell you now, I can still remember in 2008, going to a meeting by the Coastal Association of Realtors and the topic was failing septic systems. You know, and here we are, you know, 15 years later and we're still addressing this, this same issue. But, you know, and also annually, I give a real estate presentation and we have literally about several, I know a lot of you in the room attend that, but we have about 250 people that attend every year, but doing that over 20 years. One of the main topics every single year that has been discussed in that real estate presentation, failing septic systems. And mainly because due to, and Josh just alluded to it, is our aging housing stock in Wycomico County. You know, our biggest building booms were back in the eighties and early nineties. So guess what? All these systems are now 30 years old. And as I always say during my real estate presentation, here's one thing I can guarantee you, every one of those systems, they will fail. They all fail. I mean, they all have a limited life. They all need to be replaced. And, you know, so it's a little bit of the perfect storm, you know, now we find ourselves in that 30-year or so window later and you add to that things such as climate change and rising water level, but also, you know, technologies changed. And I think the big thing is, and I know, you know, Suzanne will be talking more about this, you know, here in a minute, but, you know, and I've always been a proponent of this, we got to get out of the box. We've been sort of in the same box for the last 25 years, how we deal with this issue and it just doesn't work, you know? And I think some, you know, there are solutions, the Circuit Rider program, we're going to talk about, be a short-term thing to help us, but, but at the same time, I think we need to start looking at those more micro solutions. And, and that coming from me, I'm, I'm a macro guy. I'm not a micro management kind of guy, but this is an issue where, you know, our issues are much different than, you know, the Calvert County issues and so forth. You know, we, we're a challenging place for, for septic systems, you know, with our soil types and our water levels. It, it does make it a challenge, but, but, you know, the technology out there does exist that presents opportunities. So, you know, I think we need to discuss that further. And, you know, I chair Greater Salisbury Committee at the moment. I'm on that task force that Matt heads up and, you know, we're working diligently to try to keep moving this needle forward, you know, because there's a lot of issues, there's a lot of parts to this, but, you know, we're trying to facilitate everybody staying involved and moving forward with this and we are covering a lot of ground. So, so I guess in the end, I just want to say, you know, there are a lot of solutions. We want as many tools in our toolbox as possible to fix this and, you know, and it takes everybody working together and I think everyone certainly recognizes this is top of the priority list and we're all trying to head in that same direction.
Any other comments? Larry?
Yes, I do want to thank everyone for coming today and speaking out, especially those speaking out on water and sewer. I remember in 2002, I was preaching water and sewer, countywide water and sewer back then, but I lived in the city. I had water and sewer, so it didn't affect me, but I knew people in the county needed it. And the Chesapeake Bay Foundation was around back then and they were getting on the council then, it was before there was a county executive and they were getting on the council about doing something for countywide water and sewer. And I remember some of the council members then were saying, oh, it's too expensive. Well, 20 years later, guess what? It's even more expensive. We've got a plan now. We've been working on it. We worked on it with the tri-county council. We've met with Somerset and Worcester County people and listened to how they were running their water and sewer program. Now we've got a plan, it's time to implement it. The best way to get it implemented is for you guys to keep coming to the council and speaking out until it's done. Hate to ask you to do that, but the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So thank you. Oh, I do have two more things, Mr. Cannon. This Saturday, the Salisbury Fire Department is celebrating their 150th celebration, 150 years to the people of Salisbury and Wycomico County. Their celebration is from 10 to 1:00. And then Powellville Days is also this Saturday, October 22nd, from 10 to 3:00 p.m. There's a lot going on this month.
Thank you. Any other comments?
It's like the rest of them said, we have been trying to address this problem. We knew that there was a shortage at the Health Department. We tried to address that by, with the salaries. We were, we wanted to give money to the employees at the Health Department, but because it's the county and the state, there's a lot of things that have to transpire and that wasn't able to happen. But we were willing to pay for the employees to come and to keep them there, but we were unable because it's two different type of governments and of course, that didn't work. It's like the lady said upfront, our land is totally different than what's over there. And like you said, like Bill said, one master plan doesn't cover the whole state. They have to come in and look at Wycomico County as a county. It's how our soil, how our soil drain. It doesn't drain the same as it does on western shore. So like everyone said, we need to come in and look at Wycomico as a whole and draw the plan from that. With that said, I think with the master plan, I don't know what the plan is that this, Ms. Dorsey is going to present to us. We haven't seen it or heard from it. Maybe it's a good plan, maybe it's something that we can move forward on. Hopefully it is so we can get some of these problems addressed. And Ms. Ashanti, the $5,000, $500,000 that they were talking about, it's not tax dollars. It's money that's left over in their account. And being that there's this ban, the money has to be disseminated. So it's not tax dollars that, that's just being used. It's money that was in their account that's had to be broken out between the five departments that's involved in the task force.
I do have one. We've heard a lot about the water and sewer plan. Somebody mentioned that we'd adopted it. We've never adopted that plan, that we accepted as a council, but we, we have not adopted a water and sewer plan. It was brought to us by the engineering firm. Colin, Colin, okay. You mentioned the municipality stepping up and getting involved. Pittsville has, I would say volunteered or they're getting ready to expand their water and sewer plant. They already have the discharge permit. That's a good place for us to start if we wanted to start there. So the, the problem of, I hate going down this road because it kind of sounds like a conspiracy theorist type deal, but, you know, John and I got on the council back in '06. The first thing we had to deal with was the downzoning of farmland. And this was coming from some folks that didn't want people building in the country. Okay? Need to downzone farmland. And of course, farmers got upset about that because it was taking their property values away from them, you know, farmers. So, you know, I worked all my life, I might want to sell a lot or two. And sometimes I think that this is a little bit by design, by not being able to get septic approved, because there are certain people that do not want people building homes in the rural area. Now, I mean, we've heard that on this council. People saying, oh, the problem is that, you know, people's been building all these houses out in people's been building all these houses out in the country, you know? And I think it might come from the top down, where people cannot get septic approved, can't get lots approved, because there's a certain group of people that do not want homes built in the rural area. And they're working, like I say, working behind the scenes to try to slow this process up. I've seen it in the past, so it's, it's just my feelings on that.
Thank you. Yes, Josh?
Last comment, I just want to clarify too. We need to make sure that as we grow, we grow in the priority funding area, we grow in the growth areas in the tier one, tier two, and not continue to grow outside of the, you know, on the farmland. We don't want to put farmers out of business by putting up, you know, growing houses instead of food or fiber. We want to make sure that we're growing in the urban areas. So that's where I want to make sure we clarify comments, it's important.
John, I need to respond to that, I'm sorry. You know, Josh, let me tell you something. I had a farmer walk in my store one day, and I brought the issue up. I said, I seen you sold some lots, and I won't mention the road, but anyway, yeah, I did. He said, I hated to sell those lots. He said, but let me tell you something, if I hadn't sold those three building lots, I wouldn't be farming today. Sometimes farmers need to sell property. Sometimes farmers want to have a home built for their children. Some people like to have their parents build a home on farmland. So it's, you know, it's their property, you know? You're talking about property rights.
Sound any deja vu?
You know, Bill talked about 2006. We did solve the problem in 2006, 2007, when we came in. It was when I was campaigning 2006, a long time ago. I was ready to talk about the airport, I was ready to talk about budgets. Everybody I ran into wanted to talk about the Health Department, everybody. I was shocked. But we solved that problem. By 2007, we made some major changes that I think resolved it. And Lori Brewster helped us with that. And it worked well for quite so many years, but then it came back to haunt us again, more recently, I said, maybe in the last eight years or so. All of a sudden, it came back, and adjustments were made, things were happening, I don't know all the details, but now we're back in that same situation again. And this council does recognize that issue. We recognize what everyone said tonight, today, which I really appreciate. We know there's a threat to contractors, we know there's a threat to developers, installers, realtors, and that the biggest threat is to the homeowners, and we get that. So, you know, this council hasn't sat idly by, we've had community, we've called for community meetings, you know, with the help of the Coastal Association of Realtors, and I know Delegate Anerton, and Senator Carosa was at these meetings, I was at these meetings, and this was quite some time ago. And we had the Maryland Department of Environment down here and trying to address it. We had the Secretary, Undersecretary of the Maryland Department of Environment in this room trying to address it. We sent letters to the state saying, do us a favor, change your salary range, increase the salary range, we'll pay the difference. We would like to do that. It was refuted. So here we are as a council, still trying to make this happen. More recently, we recognized that salary supplements could be done, but we haven't been able to get that across the finish line. So, you know, we're here today, and believe me, we've worked with so many agencies, whether it's Coastal Association of Realtors, Greater Salisbury Committee, I mean, on an ongoing basis. Greg Page with the tri-county council, Chesapeake Bay Foundation, the Eastern Shore delegation, this is what we've been doing, and we've been working very hard to make this happen. Fifth step, okay? We do have the Undersecretary of the Maryland Department of Environment, Suzanne Dorsey, here today, hopefully with some type of agreement on circuit riders that'll get us out of this bind here, okay? I have a lot of confidence, as Mike Dunn said, Suzanne has been in Wacomico County five, six, or seven times. I haven't seen a representative from the state of Maryland my entire history on the county council who has been in this county as often as she had. 100% sincere concern about what we're doing here. Bill, you mentioned out of the box, there could be out of the box. We're considering, what do we do? Maybe we add another department to Wacomico County. The actual Environmental Health Department will be within Wacomico County, just as we're making the airport a department of Wacomico County, and any other department. We'll have to see how that plays out with the dynamics, because right now, with a lot of funding coming from the state, we're not sure, you know, what that fiscal responsibility might be, but it certainly is one of those out-of-box solutions that we are going to address. So here we are today, I'm going to adjourn from a legislative meeting so we can go into a work session with Undersecretary Dorsey. So that being said, entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work session, keeping in mind that we will be reconvening in legislative session at about 1:30 to address the bond contract. So entertain a motion, please.
No movement.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Huh?
Meetings adjourned.